...ago Superintendent Carol Johnson is also blowing the belief in parental involvement. And because of the value of that, and you have to show that, that commitment, you can get parents involved to support the educational system. Again, I believe in this superintendent. And in closing, I'm going to say this, for those who are familiar with Tom Hanks, the actor in the movie Captain Shirley. You don't change captains when your plane's going down. You want that strong leadership. Now is not the time to change leadership. Now is the time to stay committed. And I believe that this is the right superintendent at the right time and the right place. Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Althea Green.
My name is Reverend Althea Green. I reside at 924 Hawthorne, Memphis 38107. I am here to speak on behalf of our faith-based community. I agree with the young man that just left the floor. When I'm shopping for a product to cook with, I take pride in buying things when they are homegrown and they are from Memphis. I am honored to have a superintendent who is a Memphisian. He knows this district. He understands our children. No, our district is not perfect, but we all serve a perfect God. On behalf of the faith-based community, I hope this is the last meeting regarding the renewal of his contract. I hope that it is a done deal tonight and we will not have to continue to climb this You have our prayers, you have our support, and thank you.
Brett Thompson.
Good evening. Brett Thompson, 1557 East Shelby Drive. I am here to speak most definitely on behalf of our superintendent. I had the unique pleasure since Monday to be involved with the new office of Family and Partnership and School Support, which I can say leadership clearly starts superintendent in this illustrious board from the very top. For the first time ever, I had a chance to go by school seat. I had heard a lot about it. I went last year to the big banquet that they had, but I didn't know the role that they played in these students. And back for the first time ever, yesterday was my birthday at 59, and I told one of your staff persons that it's probably the best birthday I've ever had. We started out over at the Holiday Inn, and they really discussed the real basics and how the community engagement and the vision, the values, and how this board in conjunction with the superintendent has operated. It reminded me years ago in helping a church in Nashville, a very large church, on a search committee for a pastor. And one of the most important things, other than the spiritual community and security, was getting the best person for the job. Often communal people and laypeople, people just like me, plain old ordinary citizens, don't realize how important a contract extension is. Having practiced law, I know how important it is to have the right lawyer with the right mouthpiece saying the right thing at the right time. I tell people, you can be innocent even in the electric chair, and if you've got the right spokesperson for you, the right leader who's there and understands. What I saw yesterday on ground was reminiscent of what I saw our great superintendent do. And I left this out months ago, but there was a person, I don't want to do the name, but he's sitting right here in front of me, and I think his initials are BS, and that means good. But he happened to be at the county commission, and four of the commissioners told me that without that person being there to assist our superintendent, we would not have received almost $1 billion. As I look forward to what's coming in January, the budget season again, I plan to be there. I plan to speak on behalf of Shelby County Schools, but more important, I want to do what the superintendent has really insisted upon us doing, is we need to play the role. And I took that baton since I left here, and now I'm the community representative for Havenview. I don't miss a meeting with the White Haven empowerment zone. I'll be at every board meeting that I can, and for every child in this district, I'll make sure that we get the maximum out. I want to thank God for you, thank God for this board, and implore you to do the best thing you can do. Thank you.
Last on our speakers tonight is Tequila Rucker.
Good evening. Tequila Rucker, President of the United Education Association. I come to reiterate and speak in support of the extension of Superintendent Johnson's contract as long as the district under his leadership continues to make progressive decisions that will transform our district for what's best for students. With the support, I have a hard ask. I'd like to ask that as you go forward, you continue to hold your district cabinet and leaders accountable for things that are going forward within our district. I know we have some hard or some, you know, disheartening information in the media right now that we have to make some hard decisions, but we're going to be holding you accountable that as our leader, that you do what's necessary and what's best for students in order to, you know, transform Shelby County Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. That ends our public comment section. We now have a request for action, so the question is now on a renewal of a contract for the superintendent. I will entertain a motion. Mr. Woods.
Madam Chair, I'll gladly make that motion this afternoon and ask the board to entertain a motion renewing the superintendent's contract through June 2020 in the amount of $285,000, putting him at par with a superintendent that was elected 9-0 in Nashville in 2016, a much smaller school district. Thank you.
Second from Mr. Orgul.
I ask of appointing order with...
Apology.
Anyone?
Yes. What is your point of order?
I think it's worth, in light of documentation we got today on compensation and the fact that we may have made a clerical error calculating it, that the compensation that you just said at 285 maybe is a different figure based on his current contract, and I think that figure is 292,517. I didn't know if you would, when you make the motion, would make it that amount, which would put us where we're supposed to be in our contract ending.
So what I would prefer, Board Chair, while I am in great support of not only renewing the superintendent's contract, also thinking that he should be paid above Nashville, the motion that's on the table is putting him at par with the Nashville superintendent, and I think letting that be the floor, and if other board members wish to entertain a different amount.
I still say.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a second, and now I'll entertain questions. Ms. Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll support the motion. I understand what Board Member Orgul was indicating about some information we received about miscalculations, and I think that those, that math and agreements can be worked out if we, once we have a number. And to see what we need to do to correct any math or miscalculations that may have occurred in the past for, based on the terms of the contract, and those terms were not met, to me, it's a matter of math to seeing what we should have done and correct that, but set the salary at the 285, and then we'll, we need to deal with those contract terms that we, that were, well, basically neither side pushed forward. But I think it's just the dollars and cents that can be resolved if reasonable minds sit down and do that. So I'm okay with the 285.
Thank you.
So I want to just clarify that the motion is for 285 to June 2020, and that was a motion by Mr. Woods and a second by Mr. Orgul, and that, Mr. Orgul, you're seconding the motion as presented? Okay, thank you. Mr. Caldwell.
So I cannot support the motion either the dollar amount of the length. We are in the middle of investigating a grading scandal at Tresman, and those results, and by the superintendent's own comments, and the text message was that this is far from over. So I think it's premature to extend a contract all the way to 2020. I think one year would be all that I'm willing to agree to, and by then, we should have some more direction. I was there for the calculations of numbers, and I have a real problem trying to vote for a number that I don't understand. We have a graduation rate that now needs to be reviewed in the findings. They said the Tresman alone was affected by 14%. So we may find out that we haven't had any growth in our graduation rate. I'm concerned about some things about the administration of the Head Start program. We've had issues with the procurement department. We have a contract process that hasn't been followed. And so I went through and I looked at the board policies, and starting in 2000, which is Board Staff Communications, it says that info requested by the board should be provided, and that's a superintendent's responsibility. Public Record, which is 1012, and it says it's a superintendent's job to determine if it's followed. 2018 is Fraud, Waste, Abuse. That's a superintendent's job to determine if it's being followed. 3013 Inventory Management, same thing. Staff Ethics, the same thing. Programs for Students with Disabilities under an IDA, that's either the superintendent or his designee. 6067 is Supervision Superintendent, so that's a superintendent's job to implement it. And then Family Engagement, 7009, it's a superintendent's job of ensuring that policy is followed. If I look at the comments that were recommended, that were mentioned by Ed Stann when he was here, he said that among the recommendations from his team, Shelby County should pass policies to make sure teachers are not pressured to pass students who are failing classes. Policy 5014 to 5015, which was originally issued in August 26th to 10th, revised in 2011, revised in '13, revised in '15, revised in '16, and under the leadership of the current Chair, when she was Chair of IBO, we modified it, and there was a lot of, a lot of work that went in. The superintendent is his, or his designee is responsible for administering it. So I don't see that, if we've had an issue of a lot of policies not being followed in this district, and it's a superintendent's responsibility to make sure that those policies are followed. The comments that it was a few bad apples that spoiled the things for students, that doesn't square with me. I think it's a time to hold him accountable. As I said, I think I would be willing to do a year, but I think it's not the time to give somebody a raise. I would be glad to revisit this after everything is settled. Thank you.
Mr. Orgul.
Ms. Superintendent, when did you become superintendent? I just want to refresh her.
February of 2013.
The Tresman case, it was 285 pages, the Dixon Hughes report. What were the years on that? I'm just, I can't remember 285 pages.
2012 to 2016.
So it started before your tenure?
Yes.
Gotcha, okay. And I just, there were three different reports, but one of them was the longest, and that was the hardest one to get through, so I wanted to understand that. What was your salary when you started in 2013?
Because interim, it was like 292.
And then when you became, when we consolidated, what did your salary go to?
269.
So we went from 100 and something thousand students to 150,000 students, and your salary went down $21,000?
That's correct.
Gotcha. The, are you familiar with your contract?
I am.
And this goes back to, Ms. Woods, what my comments were. I think, by the way, and I noticed there were these Run SCS, they didn't get up and speak, but I went back and asked. I think they're here in support of you. They think you're doing a great job. And I know it's not perfect. We've got a lot of balls in the air. It's tough and a tough situation, but I appreciate your hard work.
Thank you.
So you went from 290 as interim down to 269, and then the next year, we didn't give our hard-working, certificated teachers a raise, so you didn't get one either.
That's correct.
Then in subsequent years, in '16, '17, and '18, and I asked Attorney Moore, we're in '18, so July 1 starts '18, so I had to get that right. So in '16, you were supposed to get a raise of 2.5% because our certificated teachers got a raise, so for whatever reason, and for the record, Mr. Johnson was not our CFO at the time when that happened, so we can't pin that on him. But he came in October, I think, of '15. But so for the '15-'16 year, you were supposed to get 2.5%. So I'm just making you aware of this, and you didn't get it. So that's cumulative. The next year, our certificated teachers, our hard-working teachers, got a 3% raise, and you got it, but you got it off the $269,000, which you should have been at 275 and gotten 3% off that. And then whether you're aware of it or not, in July, you were supposed to get a raise for 292. So as your board member and your friend, but I'm asking questions, and he's answering them, Dr. Schultz, do I not have, I'm not making a statement, I'm asking him questions?
If time does not run when he answers questions.
Oh, am I talking that long? I apologize. Anyway, as your friend, I would not sign any new contract. I wouldn't do anything but ask Mr. Orgul to contract because you're asking for a $7,500 pay cut, and that's why I wanted to make an adjustment his. You're supposed to be getting paid 292,517. We've got a CFO that works for you that can verify, but he did that today, and he sent it around for all of us to see. So you're being, you asked for something based on information you didn't have. Now you have that information. I wouldn't sign a contract taking a $7,500 pay cut in light of the fact you already took a $21,000 pay cut.
Thank you, Ms. Orgul. Mr. McCormick.
Whoops. Always covering. Mr. Woods, I just, in your motion and through 2020, so can we clarify that that's through 630 of 2020?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Caldwell.
So there was...
That's the second time.
Thank you, yeah. I'll be short. So my understanding, the way the contract reads, if there was a raise, and there was discussion that there was a bonus in 2016, so there was quite a bit of discussion about that, and I don't think that was ever completely clarified. And I did look at the documents, and that was a recap. There was nothing on there that indicated that those numbers were what should have been. Those were estimates of percentages. Thank you.
Ms. Love.
Thank you. I do want to go back to what Board Member Orgul stated, and I guess since we're only talking to the superintendent. Although there was, there was language in the contract that stated that he should have received a raise, I think we had a lengthy discussion about what our job was, and that's the governance and the policy. We don't work for HR. So I do think, like what Board Member Jones stated, we need to explore this at another time. But I will say that although we do have challenges, I do think that is the will of the board that we extend this contract. I'm not going to say that I'm happy with a lot of things that have taken place, but what I will say is, if the board agrees to extend this contract, the superintendent is only, the superintendent only does what we as a board allow him to do. So if there are challenges, there are issues in this district, and we as a board are not holding the superintendent 100% accountable, we cannot continue to blame him solely for the ills that happen in this district. I myself, as one board member, I may have issues, but we all know the challenges in this district as a whole. So that goes back to us implementing policies. That goes back to us making sure that the superintendent understands that, you know, that we need to correct some things. Under, since I've been on the board, there have been some great things that have happened in the district, especially with the Critical Focus Schools, the Superintendent's Learning Academy, and the parent ambassadors that we are about to, that we are about to start. So I will say that I will be in support of this contract, but I guess I want to give a challenge to all my board members as well, that the superintendent can only make this district as great as we help him to make this district. So we, as a board, we need to make sure we hold him accountable. And I know my board member Orgul said that, you know, they're friends. In this business, it's not about friends. It's about our children. It's about making sure our children receive what they need. We are a Level 1 district. We have children in sixth and seventh grade who can't read. We have schools that need to be repaired. We have schools that are cold. The building, the children are cold inside the building, so we have work to do. And Superintendent, I do appreciate the work that you have done, but by no means does that mean that I, as a single board member, will give any passes. So I do appreciate what you're doing, but I also want you to recognize and understand that there is plenty of work that we must continue doing.
Ms. Bibbs. Board Member Bibbs, did you want to speak? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see Ms. Jones's.
So I guess I got a little lost on Board Member Orgul's calculations in terms of the 90 to 92, and it was my understanding, and he's not listening, so I can just say what I want to say, yeah. But I wasn't, I wasn't, it was not my thought that the 292 was where we were now. If we had done what we need to do and been HR, like Board Member Love said, that might be where we would be once the current pending evaluation was completed and assuming that he received favorable marks. But currently, we haven't completed that, we haven't scored that, and so that would be '18. That was my understanding. So we're not to that last, that's my understanding, we're not to that last category yet. But maybe we are. But in any case, I support the motion on the floor, 285.
So just as a point of clarification, Mr., do you want Mr. Morris to?
I'm good.
Okay, Ms. Bibbs, if you could comment, please.
Thank you, Chair. So we've been, I guess, talking about this for quite some time. I will say this, I am in support of the motion, but I will say I accept Board Member Love's challenge that she called to action that she issued to us. We are often lock and step in our thoughts around where we are as a district. I think, you know, just as much as she mentioned the fact that as board members, we need to step up to the plate as well around making sure we hold the superintendent and his staff accountable. The superintendent is our only employee. So instead of us being able, as we may deliberate on particular issues, let's then make sure that we show up for those one-on-one meetings with the superintendent like we're asking for. Let's make sure that we do the things in which we know that we should be responsible for in order to move this work forward. This is hard work, and I listen to teachers and families every day, and I think that's when I make decisions based upon how they respond to us. And I think as a board, we need to make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to do. It can't just be one or two of us. I'm going to say that. It has to be all of us in lock and step in order to push the superintendent forward. Just as much as we're holding him to task, we've got to start holding each other to task to get this work done.
Mr. Orgul, your second time.
So I'm going to ask the attorney a question. And nice work, by the way, doing all this. The current contract, and Teresa, I did hear you on that, and I understand, so we don't give a raise to the superintendent in the current contract until, I was asking you this, until after we do the evaluation. So the evaluation drags, so our teachers got their raise July 1 at 3%, I think, and then, but our evaluation drags that into, yeah, 3%, drags beyond that, so we might not have the evaluation done until Board Chair wins our evaluation. It's supposed to be in November.
So we have, we suspended the rules for the evaluation because we were needing to get a facilitator hired, so we're in the process of doing that.
And that's not a fault of anybody, I understand. So in the current contract, would we then go back retroactively to the beginning of fiscal year and pay him that? Because I agree, he's being, the superintendent's being paid about 283,900 and something dollars is what he should be getting paid. But so then, when we do the evaluation, the trigger in there at the evaluation is you give him the same raise as the certificated employees. Is that, is that the way you read it?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So I can be agreeable with the 285 with one stipulation, and I, but I think it's accounting. If we owe the superintendent back pay, which it could be any employee, because any employee we owe back pay to, we pay them. I mean, we make mistakes all the time. We have how many employees?
About 11,000.
11,000? We make mistakes all the time, and we all get calls on them, and then we turn it over to the superintendent to distribute.
Yes.
Well, are we going to then, whatever the back pay amount is, catch him back up on his back pay because he was actually paid wrong under the current contract?
So I don't think that we can make that determination until we do the evaluation, so I think at the point of the evaluation, the board will need to make a decision on that. And I'm just going to ask the general counsel to comment.
Well, there are two questions, if I might. One was...
Your microphone, please.
One was the calculation for the current pay under the existing contract, and I believe it is correct that if you adjusted for the raises that were not given in the years that the certificated employees received raises and the superintendent received a satisfactory evaluation, the range of pay would be up around 283,997. That's the first question. The second question is, if he had gotten the raises when he was entitled to them, all other things being in order, what would he be owed for that period of time? And I think there's a calculation that's been made that I don't, I haven't gone back to check the numbers, but I don't find any, I don't find any disagreement with. The idea of making whole and adjusting back to when it should have been done and paying him forward from that point. So the figure they've come up with is 29098. That figure contemplates a raise in 2018, so we're probably, well, they can do the fine sharp pencil calculations, but there should be an adjustment made to reflect the compensation he should have received in prior years when he was eligible for a raise under the contract, and it did not get awarded to him.
So that was, I was just saying, clean up the housekeeping. And if it's 14,000, which I think it's closer to 14, because you stated we hadn't granted the 3%, we haven't done the evaluation, so he wouldn't even be entitled to the raise until after a satisfactory evaluation. So it's, that included this year's amount, and it probably shouldn't because we haven't done the evaluation. So I think it's a lower amount, but it's just, it's a housekeeping thing. I just didn't want him to waive his rights to go to HR and say, hey, guys, you paid me wrong, like our other 11,000 employees have the same right to do if we were off any dollar amount. That was my only statement.
Okay.
But I'm in agreement with the motion.
Okay. Mr. Cornell.
I'd like to ask the...
I'd like to ask the attorney a question.
Sure.
Two questions.
Mr. Morris?
What was, what was the duration of the old contract that we are now renewing?
The old contract, the 2014 contract, was a four-year contract expiring FY '18.
Okay, and were we, as a board, subject to the terms of that old contract?
Yes.
Okay. Madam Chair, I just want to kind of summarize. Number one, the old contract provided that superintendent was to get a raise, he didn't get, and apparently, he did not bother us to ask for it. And that was tied to the fact that if teachers get a raise, the superintendent would get a raise, and I, I don't think there's a problem with that. If the superintendent and the budget officer can pull us out of the situation we were in and give teachers raises, then at that point, I think they deserve a raise. The second thing is, is that we will have a new evaluation, hopefully, and there'll be a new, more rigorous evaluation, and therefore, we can expect more. The third thing is, that I agree with some that have said before, that we need to step up and require more of the administration, but also more of ourselves, starting January 2018.
No, it's starting tomorrow.
Oh, well, I, I was going to say, happy holidays.
Thank you, Mike. Happy holidays to you too. Ms. Love?
Are we allowed to ask the superintendent a question?
Yes.
You can ask through the chair.
Okay. Okay, Chair. So I know that in Number 13, when we spoke about governance, and we had a lengthy discussion about that. So my question is, moving forward, will the same, I guess, friendly conversation remain in place? Because that's not what this, what Number 13 states. So if there are certain chiefs that, if there are certain chiefs that the superintendent has stated that we are allowed to go to and, I guess, discuss, since we, some of us have, some of us are committee chairs, will that friendly relationship still remain in place? Or will we have to follow what Number 13 states?
So Superintendent, they're referring to what state statute says, which is that we only have one employee, which is the superintendent, and they just wanted to make sure that, as you have done in the past, which has been to allow board members to have conversations with cabinet members and staff, to have follow-up questions in order to appropriately leave their committees. Are you still open to that?
Absolutely.
And Mike, Stephanie, that was your second time, and Mike, this is your second time.
I'm sorry, did you have another question?
I do. Thank you. So Superintendent, I do thank you for that, and I also want to make sure that you understand that we know that you are our superintendent, and our job is to, our job is for governance and for policy. But I just, I had to make sure that that was, that was noted. Thank you.
So it's notated for the record. Mr. Cornell, your second time?
Yeah, I interpret that part as, just like to enforce the entire contract, we as a body have to enforce it. I interpret that part as reflecting what the state law, in my opinion, says, and that is, we can't start voting, you know, to hire and fire and move people around and do the things that boards used to do before the state law was passed. So I think that provision, when I looked at it again, I think it's more collective, that as a group, we can't vote to override the employee, because he is a state officer as the executive director and superintendent of the board.
So seeing no further lights, I just wanted to also state that I'm in support of this motion. I want to thank the superintendent, because we have made a lot of gains over the last two years, and I appreciate the fact that we are now a district that is in the black, and that we're now making decisions based on resources that are available to us to support our kids, where we know we have some deficits. We are moving to address those deficits, and I think that he has, obviously in our board retreat, you shared a lot of the ways in which you anticipate your cabinet being held accountable to making us a district, a Level 5 district again. And with the new standards that have been put in place, we know that we have a responsibility to not only the students of this community, but stakeholders, as well as other community constituents, to improve the well-being of kids within this district. And I think all of us, you know, everyone who sits here tonight has a commitment to that. I think having an opportunity to have an evaluation that also holds you accountable so that you can hold your staff accountable. We know that that is a process. And with over 200 schools, 200 buildings within our district, and 100,000 students, we know it's not going to happen overnight, but I do believe that you are making the decisions and moving us in the right direction. So I also will be supporting this motion of a renewal, because it is not an extension with new terms, and now is a renewal of his contract. And so, Ms. Anthony, please do a roll call vote.
Board Chair Avan, is it okay if I read the recommended, the motion before this body?
I'll clarify the motion. The motion is for renewal of the contract for the terms of 285,000 to June 2020. A roll call vote, please.
Yes, ma'am. Board Member Caldwell?
Abstain.
June 30, 2020.
Board Member Orgel?
Aye.
Board Member Woods?
Aye.
Board Member Love?
Aye.
Board Member McCormick?
Aye.
Board Member Jones?
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs?
Aye.
Board Member Cornell?
Aye.
Board Chair Avan?
Aye.
You have eight ayes and one abstain.
So that motion passes. Superintendent, we appreciate your time and your service, and we look forward to another couple of years.
Congratulations.
And there, there is no other business. Superintendent, would you like to make a few comments?
Just thank you, and we'll continue to work as hard as we can on behalf of kids. Really appreciate those principals there and the community members that have been so supportive, and appreciate the overwhelming majority of the board members who've been supportive, and we know there's a lot of work to do, and we're going to keep doing the best we can on behalf of kids.
No other business before this board, this meeting is adjourned.